We've got a few seconds left before it's seven.
Yep.
Everything okay?
Uh, let's see.
No, I mean, I saw your email from last week why you weren't able to make it to the meeting. Hope everything's okay.
No, she's gonna see the orthopedic guy on Monday. Stress fractures in her spine.
She'll be getting me.
So, okay. All right, seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. First thing we have is the manifest, which is twenty-three hours for Jane Boucher. Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We did go, Bob and I were at the walk-through. And Mr. Cross was there, Errol Rhodes was there, and Bob Matthews was there. We did observe some cars coming up over the hill from the driveway, proposed driveway location. Your, one of your concerns was what you thought maybe the grade was for braking conditions on that.
Basically, we have, I would say we have, the road, I don't have the plan in front of me, but I would say we, it's a dual slope position, which is probably at about four percent that drops down to about six percent. Okay? You know, this little stretch right here is pretty steep.
Yeah.
You know, and the driveway is located up here, so the first thing you see is the roof of the car below this little area right here.
Right.
Based on the speed of thirty miles an hour, even at this grade here, which is at least four percent, braking capacity would be, you know, pretty good at the thirty miles an hour.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
It's thirty-five.
Okay, thirty-five, even at thirty-five, it's, you know, it's, it's not a flat area. It's uphill the whole way.
Right, right.
So they would be, you know, and then they can document that, but, you know, we did observe some cars there and based on the speed that those cars were going, when you were standing where the stake is, at about four feet off the edge of the road, you know, and I was standing in a hole, which was probably a foot below. The actual edge of pavement, now, I didn't duck down just to make it normal for everybody, but, you know, it was still a foot lower than.
Yep.
But I would, as far as line of sight, if you were sitting in a car, the first thing you're gonna see is the roof of the car.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, within a half a second, you're into the windshield.
Yep.
Okay? So... The... From my perspective, the, based on what I saw there, on the cars coming in and at the speed they were doing, anybody who would be turning to the left or right would be able to see those cars.
Yeah.
Line of sight uphill is, you know, exponentially longer.
To the south, yeah.
Yeah. So it's that one little crest right there, based on the driveway. And not only that, as the driveway comes down, and you're, if you're driving down the driveway and you're looking to the left, you're actually higher, which gets you more vision down over the crest of the hill.
Yeah.
Because they're gonna be, you know, they're obviously gonna have to trim some of that brush and stuff out of there to get the driveway, and so line of sight right there will, for a while anyways, until it gets over ground.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but power lines are on that side of the road, and based on the way they trim for the trees underneath the power lines these days, so it would, it won't, it's not like full-size trees will ever be growing there again.
Yeah, right.
Because of the trimming policy.
Mm-hmm.
So... Errol, Ed, you have anything, comment about the meeting?
No, I think the meeting went well. I think overall, the site is pretty decent. And they got the trees kicked back, and I didn't mention it, but you brought up, you know, coming out of the driveway, they're gonna be able to see, you'll be at a higher elevation anyway through the road. And so their sight of vision is pretty long. Plus, not only that, further down the hill, you know, further off, you, again, pick up the sight of cars coming.
Right. So you have a blind sight closer than you do further.
Yeah.
So as you look down the road, if a car's five hundred feet down the road, you can see it.
Yep.
It's when it gets to that two sixty-eight, is that what it?
Yeah, two sixty-eight.
Two sixty-eight.
Mm-hmm.
There's a, there's a blind spot from here to, say, maybe the bottom of this hill.
Yeah, right.
Okay? But further to the north, if the car is, you know, like four hundred feet out, you can see it.
Mm-hmm.
The only blind spot comes in when it gets around two sixty-eight.
Right.
Okay?
So the interval where you don't see an incoming vehicle is pretty short.
Right.
Maybe less than five seconds.
Yeah, so if the car were traveling around at thirty-five, you know, and they get into the bottom of this hill from here to there, yeah, it's, it's a pretty short period.
Yeah.
And, and at night, will, will be better because of lights being on.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? So the only time that would really be an issue is during the day.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? At night, at night, with, as long as the person has their lights on, you know, things would be much better.
Yeah.
What's the requirement?
For the, for the speed limit?
No, 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 for the line of sight.
That's what I'm saying. It's based on a speed limit.
Four hundred.
Four hundred, so, given that you can see it prior to, but not in that moment again, would signage fully meet that with? Or if you turn it on?
Could, could be, yeah.
What kind of signage? In the who?
Well, it would be your responsibility if we, if we called for a sign.
No, I know, but I'm saying, a sign for the people coming out of the driveway?
No, 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 for people on the road. People coming from the north, heading south.
Like a blind drive sign. Hidden drive, blind drive, yeah.
I, I understand that signage, but I don't, I don't think at two hundred and sixty-eight feet, I don't know if that's a blind driveway.
I would, I would've thought, actually.
The driveway, you'd only be under the driveway.
Hold on. Go ahead, Errol.
That, that was my, my thought, was actually for people coming out of the driveway. Be careful on the left because there's blind, people on the road. Not people on the road.
Yeah, I, I would say the fact that it's over two hundred and, two hundred and sixty feet, I don't know where you, who you put a sign.
Well, our, our standard is four hundred.
No, I have.
Unless, unless we grant a waiver.
Yeah, I don't mind putting a sign wherever you, if you say, hey, Ed, stick a sign right there, there'll be a sign there tomorrow. Okay? But I wanted to clarify, a sign for the driveway or a sign for the?
Well, it would be the town's responsibility, yeah.
Right.
The sign.
So the sign would have to be on the road, not on the driveway.
Right, yeah.
So the sign would have to be on the road, and it would have to be prior to the two sixty-eight. It would have to be down at four hundred feet. I guess that could be a condition.
Yeah, right.
That, that's a, a cheap condition.
Like I said, if you told me to put a sign up to the?
As long as people watch and read the sign and are aware of it and take heart of it, then it will work. If somebody's on a mission and they don't care, there's nothing you can do about that.
Right.
I guess to whatever your?
Yeah. No, that's, that's fine there. But like I said, the, the good thing about this is, is that it's not a, you're not on the downhill side. You know, anybody on that side of the road. Because you can see anything coming from the south.
Mm-hmm.
Going away from you or coming at you.
Right.
And, you know, obviously, it would be more of an issue if there were a high traffic count on that road. I don't know what the car count is on that road, so.
I don't think Southern Hampshire. Cam, you guys, have you guys ever set up a traffic count on Range Road or Ridge Road?
Um, I can check right now. I'm just looking at the MUTCD guidelines right now to see if there's a distance for driveway signage. But, um, give me one sec.
Sure. So, you know, I think that the, the issue of sight can be remedied relatively easy. It's, it shouldn't be a hard issue to remedy, whether it's a sign or, you know, whatever, whatever we did come up with.
For the most part, usually it's pretty much the same traffic every day.
Yeah. Except for when people from the planning board show up. Car counts.
Or during the fair.
I was a little concerned when Errol got there, I thought he was gonna get stuck when you drove in. And I was like, uh-oh.
You know, I don't know what time it is, you have to have four-wheel driver.
Oh. I was like, uh-oh.
Minutes to, if you want.
Yes, we have minutes.
Get those done.
I have one other comment.
Go ahead, Errol.
I think I made it at the time, which was a Heritage Commission Act.
Yeah.
About the, about the stone walls.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know what this board, your, this board, you know, the goal is in enforcing or statement capacity. It says that stone walls that are boundaries need to be minimally secured.
I, I mean, based on where the driveway stake was. And without the plans in front of me, I, I know we have, it's a fifty-foot right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
Which would be twenty-five to the left and twenty-five to the right of that stake.
The stake got moved up as we were talking.
Right. But even then, the right-of-way would be fifty feet. So from the center, potentially, potentially, not, not that it's gonna happen, twenty-five feet of that wall could be removed. Now, they're not building a fifty-foot wide road, so they're, you know, going in at twenty-four. So from that stake, you have potential of, a minimum of twelve, and if they need to have a two-to-one slope on it, you could lose sixteen to eighteen of the wall. And as you go to the north, where the stake was originally, some of the wall's already gone.
Yeah, there's not much more.
No. So I, as far as a major impact on the existing rock wall?
I just bear in mind that the rock wall on Lake Grove, the, the, the term, the wall that had been along the entire lot was just removed when that house was put in. And so, there didn't seem to be any care taken about that. But I'm sure this building will be more careful.
I move enough rocks in any house, plus we don't want to do more.
Okay.
We do, just, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Traffic counts in, in that location.
You did or didn't?
We have.
Oh, you have?
Yeah. Like Range Road or Bell Road area?
How long ago?
Two thousand and sixteen was the last count.
That's not bad, yeah. Okay.
Uh, yeah, do you want to know the average? Uh, daily, five sixty on Range right there.
Okay. So that's?
And then seven hundred on Middle Road.
Okay. And that's over a, how many hour period?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four hours?
It's an average annual daily traffic.
Okay.
So it's like a bunch of factors that we put in and?
It's like twenty-five cars an hour. Yeah, roughly. How many? I stand up. I just don't wanna see that point three.
So I've got a, I've got a couple of items on the twenty-eighth meeting?
Yes.
Okay. First page.
Yep.
Let's see, just above the seven twenty, uh?
Yep.
Application. Uh, McGary suggested that still photos and videos be taken before the strike dur-
Before end.
Before, actually, just be?
You said before and during.
Oh, yeah, okay, we can put and in there.
Yeah, somehow got the, okay.
And that's, that's fine. Second page. Uh, just about close to the bottom. You get Cameron Proman said Sylvia and just insert Pelletier, Rick Pelletier.
Oh, yeah.
Just to make it clear who that Rick is. And then, middle of page three. Joanne Bradbury noted that information, insert on vernal pools, published by UNH.
Oh, okay.
And then, the last, the last paragraph, the bottom of the page, second line, insert item before number one, and then insert and after?
Item?
Yeah, item.
Okay.
Concern about item number one and number three.
Okay.
And then another and on the third line. Uh, we'll go back to the drawing board with this information and meet again.
And what?
And meet again.
Okay. All right.
And then, last page, third line down, with a member of instead of if, the DCC.
Oh.
See that? Third line.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? I know Bill wasn't here and Bob wasn't here either.
Right.
Yep, the only one I have is where Donna Wyman noted that trucks will not have to turn around, they'll back out. Would be, they could back out.
First page.
First page?
First page, sorry.
Right about in the middle.
And back, back out?
Yeah, where it says that they would, uh, don't have to turn around, they, they will back out.
Okay.
I would say they could, I didn't say they will, I said they could back out if asked.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections noted tonight.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're abstaining.
Cam, did you meet with the Conservation Commission?
Yes, Sylvia and I went, attended their meeting on Monday. We shared the concerns and, you know, our discussion points that we talked about during our meeting. And they shared their concerns, which were several. And ultimately, we, we invited them to come to the meeting, the next planning board meeting. And I, I could go into a little more detail if you want, or if you wanna keep it to?
Well, we have time.
Has the chair.
We have roughly thirty minutes, so. Take it away, Cam.
Do a lot of detail.
So, they, they shared a lot of the concerns that some folks, including Errol, shared at the planning board meeting. Ultimately, they would like to know, you know, where this is coming from, how this wetland setback has impacted property owners or potential applicants in the past. And I spoke with Rick and Jane, talked about possibly pulling several years of variances, I mean, going through them and seeing, you know, how wetland setbacks have impacted that and, you know, how that has worked out through the zoning board. They also shared that without some sort of comprehensive overhaul of the zoning ordinance, inserting a paragraph that would, you know, allow some sort of flexibility could create several issues in town. The wetland ordinance as it stands is pretty simple, and it's effective because it's so simple, you know, of protecting wetlands, so, in their view, without a pretty comprehensive overhaul of the zoning, you know, I, I think, I think that's what they would like to see if we were to move forward on this. And, I don't know, Errol, if, if I'm missing any of the major?
Bidding the mountain dogs.
Yeah.
Well, the ordinance is new, it's only a couple of years old. The prior ordinance allowed up to a quarter acre.
Yeah.
Which is roughly, what, eleven thousand square feet?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand. And, and at that point, the, 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 the planning board had discretion to even review that, you know, if we thought it was worth reviewing.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think that we're not going to eradicate the ordinance. I just think that it's more of an issue of when somebody comes in with a plan and they have issues with vernal pools, that we need to be able to be flexible. And in order to do that, if we have to set up a sort of criteria that they have to meet in order to, to gain some flexibility, that's what we would need to develop. Not just automatically.
Right.
You know, it's like, okay, well, why is it this way? Not, okay, it's this way, we're just gonna do it. You know, so it's, it's more an issue of what are they trying to do? Where are they trying to do it? Is there enough room, period, to do what they're trying to do?
Mm-hmm.
You know, because obviously, we've had people in here with less than an acre trying to do a lot. And, and it, and it really doesn't work.
Right.
And, you know, it, it's more of an issue of what they're trying to do and how they're trying to do it and how much land they have to, to work with, you know? Do they have, do they even have a chance for any sort of flexibility? That's what it comes down to. They might not.
Mm-hmm.
You know, this may not. So, it's, um, that's, that's basically what I'm looking at.
Yeah, so, you know, we, we didn't really talk about that. I, I do believe a Conservation Commission member did mention some sort of criteria, you know, if, for something like that. I can't speak for the Conservation Commission, of course. But I think, you know, perhaps they would be willing to work on something like that more than, you know, having a clause in there that would just give the planning board discretion, you know, of, depending on the size of the wetland, because in their view, you know, the size could be irrelevant to the value or the function of the wetland, so. Again, I can't speak to, you know, what they're gonna want, but I think that would be a good place for a discussion when they come.
And they're coming in for the next meeting?
They're coming in on the twenty-fifth, yes.
Of Au- of August, okay.
Next meeting.
Yeah. Okay. So, at this point, I think that, you know, before we even proceed any further, we need to, they need to be here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I won't be here for that meeting.
I know.
Won't be, will be? No.
He's gonna be traveling.
You're traveling, okay.
Traveling man.
Okay, so, other news, I received a letter from the Board of Selectmen, and I will read it. "August 2nd, 2021, Peter Shilohou, Chair of the Deerfield Planning Board." It's concerning class-six roads. Dear Pete, the Board of Selectmen is reminding all elected officials and elected and appointed board members and employees that have cause to review applications for use and make decisions regarding the use of land located on class-six roads. Excuse me, this one's class-five roads. No. What are we talking about? Up here we got that's six, down here is five.
Four.
Four. I'm like, wait a minute. So they got the Roman numerals messed up, so.
Definitely.
It's class-six, so we're not on a class-four road, let's say. That they must notify the Board of Selectmen upon submission of any application for the use of that land. The New Hampshire RSA 674:41 states, "From and after the time when a planning board shall expressly have been granted the authority to approve or disapprove plats by a municipality as described in RSA 674:35. No building shall be erected on any lot within any part of the municipality, nor shall a building be, permit be issued for the erection of a building unless the street giving access to the lot upon which such building is proposed to be placed. In a class-six highway, provided that the local governing body, after review and comment by the planning board, has voted to authorize the issuance of building permits for the erection of buildings on said class-six highway or a portion thereof. Your municipality neither assumes responsibility for the maintenance of the said class-six highway nor liability for any damages resulting from the use thereof. And, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall produce evidence that notice of the limits of the municipal responsibility and liability has been recorded in the County Registry of Deeds. Recent events have unfortunately highlighted the absence of a clear line of commu- excuse me, communication between various boards and employees where this issue is involved. Moving forward, it is the hope of the Board of Selectmen that the improved communication and the sharing of pertinent information will prevent any misunderstandings from occurring in the future. The Board of Selectmen is anticipating your cooperation to ensure the process for making the land use decisions on class-six roads becomes transparent and seamless process for all involved. Signed by the Chairman, the Vice Chairman, Fred, Cynthia, and Alden Del. So, do we wanna read this? Now, we don't need to read this, fine.
I think Bill wants it.
Oh, yeah, he's waiting.
I think that, I guess there's, obviously, there's been some confusion in people. I'm not sure exactly what's going on sometimes. So I guess we're just gonna have to do a little more due diligence on, you know, what we're doing.
Yeah.
Can I take this?
Yeah, take that.
I'll give it back to you, I'll send it back to you.
No, no, you can, you can have it.
I think it should be encased in a glass case.
Pete, was there an activity that initiated this that?
Wasn't, sitting in the right, front row.
Okay, that's off.
Deerfield's local latest agar from F Troop who likes to catch arrows. Yes, I mean, I, and also up on Skip's land. There was some issues up there with that being class-six too.
Yeah, but that?
But it was, it really wasn't. It was more concerned with, well, not Northwood, right? As opposed to where Skip's land goes through?
Oh, oh, yeah, Alston?
Yeah, so, so it's just a matter of, obviously, we can't make a decision on anything without notifying them, that's what, that's what they're asking for.
Yeah, that, that reminded me of that too, so.
So basically, a lot of this falls back to Rick, if it's just a building.
Yeah.
So it's a matter of?
So it's a matter of if, if, uh, somebody comes into Rick and asks for a building permit on a class six road, it's, it's more than likely Rick has to kick it over to us.
Yeah.
And then we have to review it, and then we gotta turn it back to the Selectmen. And then you guys come back to us.
Mm-hmm, right.
That's, so it's gonna go up and down the ladder before Rick can do anything.
Yeah.
Or whoever the future building inspector is.
Exactly.
Still have to wait fifteen minutes for you guys.
Unfortunately, we had a cancellation, so.
I don't know any of the jokes.
I did take a drive up to McCarren subdivision.
Oh, yeah, how's that going?
I'm in the proceeding. I did talk to Ryan Taber. Cam had talked to him as well today.
He, um. Down for the road?
Well, he's, he's to the point where they can, almost there. The month of July didn't help him.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, um, but I've been up there. I mean, it certainly has weathered the weather much better than the previous guy.
Yeah.
Okay, um, cause I've, I've been up there more than a few times just to, to see how things were going. I mean, they are working on it. I mean, obviously, the amount of rain that we got in July didn't help him. But, uh, you know, I talked to him myself on the phone today and I, I think he's hoping to come in on the first meeting in, in September.
He's scheduled to come in on the eighth, yeah.
So, you know, hopefully by the time when he comes in, he's that much further along. If he, you know, if he can get a couple of weeks of dry weather, I think, you know, cause they're, they're, they're right there.
Yeah.
But I think it's out in the back where they're having the issues. From the road down to where the culvert is, looks very good.
Oh, good.
Um, I think it's just on the other side of the culvert coming up into where the cul-de-sac is gonna be.
Yeah.
And I think they're having some issues in there. That was, without literally walking out there, that's pretty much what I observed.
Yeah.
Um, you know, they still have plenty of erosion control and everything out, and it looks to be, to be working. I mean, you know, if you get the right storm, it doesn't matter how much you put down. It's, it's.
Very true.
You know, there's only so much you can do. They are, you know, it's not a disaster. Like you and I observed a long time ago.
Yeah. So I'm looking at this letter dated June fourteenth and it, I don't know.
Oh, that, I guess just a, just informational. That was sent with your approval. That Fred drafted it.
Says if the compliance hearing will be held on August eleventh.
It was supposed to be.
Right, that was supposed to be tonight.
Tonight.
Do we need to extend, um?
It wasn't noticed or anything and I, he's aware of it. He's the one that asked for the extension. And his engineer, um, or Ke- Keach Nordstrom is aware of it, so.
Yeah, um, basically, at that time, he was supposed to come in and if everything was accepted by Keach Nordstrom, he was gonna post a bond, okay? But because of the weather, he's not at that point yet. So he's delayed it by a month because that's basically what he's saying he lost, was a month of time. So he wants to come in on the September first meeting in September. And hopefully, you know, and, and, and we can't do anything until it's inspected one way or the other.
Yeah.
You know, if Keach Nordstrom comes in and says he needs to do more, even if it's the first meeting in September, well, we can't do anything until it, Keach Nordstrom inspection report is, is what we're looking for. It's gotta be acceptable. Um, that's, that's where we're at.
And obviously, you can't sell any lots.
No, he can't, you know, he, the longer this takes, the more it hurts him. And I, and I did talk to him about that on the phone today. I said, obviously, uh, things aren't going as well as you would like because, you know, you need to be further down the road so you can part with the land. And, uh, yeah, he, um, it's obviously costing him money. So, um, I, he has nothing but in his own best interest to get this thing squared away because he's sitting on something he can't do anything with it.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Maybe, maybe we should have a, a motion to.
Or grant him an extension.
And have the compliance hearing pushed to the first meeting in September.
You want a motion on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
You're just.
The compliance hearing extended to the first meeting in September.
Okay.
And we have a, a second by Bob and Bill.
Okay.
All right, and we'll have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. The, um, we have a letter from EverSource.
Everybody got a copy of that, too.
This is, looks like this is what they've done.
They didn't put a date on their letter.
Well, the page underneath, they did.
Yeah, John's the one that gave that to me, so I don't.
Um, yeah, I know, I noticed that.
It came to the Selectmen.
Okay. So they obviously did this the day after.
Yeah. Well, they were all set with the forty-five grand.
Yeah, because if you look at John's email, he sent it back to Ashley. And he sent it on Ju- July thirtieth. So she probably sent him this information on either the twenty-ninth or the beginning of the thirtieth. Because John sent it back at eleven thirty. So, I don't know. I guess next time we'll just ask him to put a date on it. That's all.
Yeah, right.
Eight minutes.
They, they did get the bridge over the bridge.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
Good.
Last time they're working out there, they've been there all week.
Oh, good.
So they got the bridge over the bridge. I think it was either Thursday or Friday.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's good. Well, hopefully it won't rain on them while they're working.
Yeah, right.
They put down their first bridge and it wasn't quite long enough. So they changed it with bigger timbers. They redid it, but that's completely drivable. Everything looks fine.
I have a question. Going back to the wetlands topic.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there was discussion of a, a working group?
Yeah.
Has that group been designated at this point?
No, I don't think we should do anything with that until we have.
Cam can tell you. They work, they're gonna meet again.
You, you mean with the Conservation Commission? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so, go ahead, Cam.
It was, I recommended it at two planning board meetings ago. We didn't establish one. Instead, Sylvia and I just sat down with Rick and just took, uh, we just looked at the zoning and came up with some discussion points. And, uh, Errol and another member of the Conservation Commission have volunteered to be a part of any group um, if it is established. But it hasn't yet, and I think the first thing we should do is start with this next meeting with the Conservation Commission members. I don't know who is coming, but, uh, they do want to attend the next meeting to talk about this, so.
Establishing a committee or a subcommittee until we meet with them. We need to meet with them first.
I missed that last meeting, so I just.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. And, you know, we're not gonna start a subcommittee until everybody's here. And we can talk about things before we get to that point. You know, cause then we, before we go down that road, we wanna make sure we have everybody here between both committees.
Right.
And then we won't have issues of, you know, well, you know, I didn't get a chance or, or whatever, so. Until we have the Conservation Commission here and anybody else who's welcome to come before we start trying to make another commission, a, uh, subcommittee.
If I may.
Go ahead, Errol.
I was at the meeting.
Yeah.
Their bigger concern was getting two people that they figured would be able to be on the committee. And they just wanted to make sure that if you're gonna form a committee before you met with them, that they wanted to have a couple of people part of that committee.
Yeah, well, that, we're not even gonna form a committee until they're here.
Yeah.
Because.
Meeting with them next time.
We need to discuss everything before we get going down that road. Um, and see where we're gonna be at the end of the meeting. Then we can, we can work on coming up with a, a sub. Go ahead, Errol.
Yeah, just, I think one of the things that was mentioned a couple of times in the meeting was, and by the Chair of the meeting, uh, Chairman of the Conservation Commission, was just trying to figure out what, if the planning board or Rick or somebody can come up with the, the number of instances of, of issues that have come up that are driving the concern.
Yeah, well, Cam had just mentioned that.
Are you gonna, I don't know, I was talking about preparing for that. That might be an opportunity if, if that's doable between now and that meeting.
I, in my opinion, I would say that there's probably not a lot of instances since that the, the, the ordinance is only two years old. And I, and I think that it's not a matter of how often it happens as much as that if it happens, we need to be able to address it. I mean, there's always the potential for people to come in and have, have a, a problem with this. I'm not saying it's gonna happen every time. And like I said, before we, we even get there, that's where, if the Conservation Commission's here and we start discussing all of this before we, you know, start going down that road, so that's where we need to be. There, you, right now, they're not gonna pull up since that law came in two years ago. They're not gonna have thirty-five instances because we haven't even had that many subdivision plans in the last two years.
It would be good if we could, could go back in, into some of the records or files and see if we.
How far back?
Two years.
Whatever they can come up with by then.
Well, I mean, even before.
That's what I'm saying.
Two years ago, just to look at.
To look at anything.
How this would apply.
Right.
To some of these others that we've approved a long time ago.
Yeah.
Assuming we have wetlands delineation on this.
Question is, is how, how, how well was any of it documented?
Mm-hmm.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
Well, excuse me, isn't there, wasn't there an example of something that came up before us that initiated this discussion? We didn't just think of this out of.
Sit in the front row again.
All right, so that's.
Lots of info. I can fill you all in if you need.
You need to be at the next meeting.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's at least one discussion point. We have a specific example that came before us and we were like.
Exactly.
Wondering how to address it, so there's one case anyway.
Okay.
I'll volunteer to be on the committee if that's a possibility.
You have to volunteer when we, when we get to it. Can't, can't pre-volunteer right now. Okay, seven forty-five. Excuse me, here. Continuation of public hearing for a major subdivision on Rage Road. Edward and Sandra Cross and Roscoe was presenting plans. I don't know, that looks like a racetrack.
So we'll go one step at a time. Uh, we did a test pit the other day.
Okay.
Uh, went down eleven and a half feet.
Okay.
It was a big rock, but I don't think it was ledge, but, uh, you designed the pond, um, about that depth. And taking out three feet of ice and two feet off the bottom, uh, we're gonna have, uh, over fifty thousand, well, fifty-four thousand gallons. And, um, we're required to have thirty, so. If he wants to get in the water bottling business, um, boy, it was just crazy, um, sand gravel and just.
Was pouring right in?
Nice clean water just pouring right in, so.
So.
Shouldn't have a problem.
Right.
Water table.
Okay, so the, the seasonal high water table was where?
The last page of this has my test pit results.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of tables near the surface. I mean, I'm near the wetland.
Yeah, that, that information should be on here.
If I gave you my last one.
Yeah.
You guys share. So, uh, it was a good pit. Well, when I'm on subdivision, I don't like this type of pit, but I'm doing a, uh, fire pond. So it was good for what we wanted for. So it was, um, just nice gravel, uh, water coming right out and just pouring out at fifty inches. But, uh, and the water table is right near the top.
That's right there. So you had no restrictive layer?
No, no, not, a lot of parts of town do, but this certainly didn't.
Okay. So, at your depth of a hundred and thirty-eight inches, which is close to twelve feet from the existing grade.
Yeah.
So did you dig the test pit closer to the three fifty-six grade or the three fifty-four grade?
I was probably just maybe half a foot higher.
Okay.
So, uh, we might have more of a water table with it.
Okay, so.
I'm basically the same.
So you, what is it, you got a twenty scale? So what are you, about, about sixty to eighty feet across?
Yes, depending on, uh, if you, which contour, the top of it or whatever, but it's around ninety-ish by, I don't have.
Yeah, no, that's what I was looking at. It's a twenty scale, so.
And, and what are the side slopes?
You're gonna be two to one? Is that what you're looking at? Or are you one and a half to one? You got ten feet. You got ten feet and twenty. That's probably about an inch, maybe a little over, so. That's probably a one to one. Well, two to, it's two to one because if you had ten feet in, in twenty, it's two to one.
Two to one.
And we have a paint hydrant in front, um, proposed.
Okay.
And, um, we have protection for the hydrant so it doesn't get run over by somebody. No parking signs.
Yeah, I'll have to check to, with the, with the chief to see. Well, first off, for him, have him take a look at this. He hasn't looked at it, has he?
He, he's looked at the site, the location.
Yeah, but as far as the plan.
I happened to, I happened to run into the chief yesterday morning.
Mm-hmm.
And I talked to him about what you were doing and, um.
Everybody see it soon.
He, um, you know, he just was, long as it's thirty thousand, that was his prime concern.
Yeah, so, yeah, we easily have that.
And I guess the question would end up being, do we need, does this have to be fenced? Even though we have a wetland over here?
Yeah, it's.
Because it's owned by the town, does that incur any liability if it's not fenced?
Well, we're not anywhere near town like it.
No, no, this is gonna be.
Near the road, you mean?
Well, no, you, once you do this, you turn it over to the town.
We're gonna own it.
The town owns it.
You are gonna have a deed to it, you're gonna have an easement to it.
Usually.
I don't care what you do.
Well, the thing is, usually, and this is the way you would want it, is that the town takes it over. And the reason why is because then that absolves you of all responsibility of the fire pond. Because if you owned it, you have to take care of it.
Well, I, I like that, cause in Raymond, they're making me own all the stuff.
In our previous conversations, the board said that they prefer to own it as opposed to an easement, so whatever.
That way, and the thing about that is, is the reason why the town wanted it is, is cause I think the last time that was one where, that was an easement. And the people were parking their boat.
Right, and blocking.
The fire hydrant.
Blocking the dry hydrant. And, uh, so they figured that the best way around that was to make that part of the road and therefore owned by the town and it'd be the same situation here.
And then after it's, you're done, you're done. And then if it needs to be cleaned out in the. And then if it needs to be cleaned out in the future, the town has to take care of that.
Right.
Because they're the ones that have to maintain this pipe. Okay? You know, because they're the ones that are going to need to hook up to it and, and all of that.
We'll just figure out how much you want to give to them. Do you want to give them to the edge of the swamp, more than they really need?
Well, the, the, the key there is that parking apron is more of an issue than probably where the water is because people will want to park there because it's paved. Okay? That's where, that's where the, the issue of the, the parking came in. It was up on Middle Road, wasn't it? The one that, it was up on Middle Road at the bottom of the hill?
There was one on, there's one on Middle, there's also one on Wild Turkey.
Yeah, I know the one on Middle, I saw a boat there once.
Yeah, and they had, the guy in Wild Turkey had one too.
Yeah. So they, that's, that's where the issue came. It wasn't so much where the actual water was, it was the parking. That's where.
We need a certain amount of footage around that to contain that panel.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so that, I mean, basically, they're going to need to be able to get an excavator in here at some point in the future.
Be able to work to the side of, you know, castle, yeah.
You know?
That one's here. Oh, that's right, because it's part of the.
So what's the circumference of the footage of that?
Yeah, probably should have the, the dimensions on the pond, at least on the, on the base.
Yeah, the, the actual bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. They hit water at fifty inches, they went down eleven feet. So, you, based on that, you almost had six, seven feet.
Seven feet.
Seven feet of water in there.
Yep.
Which is, that's a lot of water.
Yeah.
That's more than the fifty that, based on low water.
Water tape, seasonal pipe.
Right.
And we can give you enough land that you can own to the real water and.
Well, that, I don't think, I don't think that's the issue, it's just more of a matter of being able to get in here and clean it out when they need to. Because they can't, if anything, they need to stay to the north side of the pond to do most of their clean out because of the wetlands over here. So, I mean, obviously, they can get around all sides, but when it comes time to clean it out, they're going to need to get in on this side so they can get trucks in there.
Ignore that line, that's the old lot line.
Right.
So we go.
Something like that.
Yeah. And because then that way, you know, the, the, they just need to be able to get by on this side.
Yeah, give you some around.
So they can go around it, but the majority of the work is going to have to take place, you know, this way.
It's pretty flat there, so.
Yeah, I know, it's pretty good down there. Get it all squared away and, will you be able to lose some of your excess fill over here to make it flat all the way around? Will that help you?
I have a use for that fill because it's.
Well, no, no, that's fine. I'm just saying that, you know, when you dig the pond itself, you know, the flatter you get it around the outside.
We're, we're going to make it as nice as.
Because you guys got to work on it too.
We've got to work on it.
Yeah.
So obviously initially, it's going to be digging a hole to flatten it around it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to happen.
We'll have some very big rocks to give away.
Yeah. We'll give them to the town for free if you'll only provide a truck.
Well, you can line them up on the wetland side and you'll be good. On the, the south side, line them up on your wetlands boundary. That way you don't have to put them in a truck.
Yeah, do you want to send this to Steve Keach for comments?
Yeah, you know.
Plus the.
He's going to, it's going to be on the final plans that he has to review anyway.
Right.
So, yeah, just have him take a look at it. Do you, at a two to one, other side's going to slump in.
That was one question I had.
What I mean by that is.
Submerged ankle repose?
Well, yeah, I'm wondering whether or not you need to line it with erosion stone.
Yeah.
Only because once it's full of water, and it's, it just becomes the, the, the material, even especially if it's.
So would you say line it, I mean, the whole thing or the?
Well, a certain point is always going to be above water, which will probably grow over with weeds. What's going to happen is you're going to get down to a certain point that's going to remain underwater all the time. And what's going to happen is eventually the slopes will slump in. And if they slump in, the pipe, the riser, you know, even though there's a screen on it, it can, the sediment can get to it.
Well, I know the cost, make it three to one instead.
Well, it's a matter of, even at three to one, it's just a matter of what the soil's going to do. You know what I'm saying? Because like when I, when I build ponds or we, if we're doing, like the job I have to work on, I have to put a, a box covered in. And they get me X amount of distance from where I have to put the cutoff wall in, which is five feet below the water. So in order for me to get five feet below the water, I need X amount of feet away from the bottom depth so I can put a coffer dam in to keep the water from, and the material from slumping down into the bottom as I'm working. What can happen is, is because you said it's kind of a, it's a bony gravel and stuff like that. If you have a lot of rock in it, that's good. What you can do is you can take all that rock and line the sides of the pond from the bottom to the top. And that qualifies as erosion stone. If you try to cut the slope and just leave the dirt, there's a potential for it to slope in, a slump in, which would, you'd lose your depth of pond.
There's almost more rock than soil.
Well, that's good, that's good for you, so when you.
Easily build it, you guys expect it and say, hey, you know.
Yeah, so what you're going to want to do, so when you're, you're going to have to de-water it to dig it because it's, you're going to, if you've got that much water, you're going to have to de-water it.
Yeah.
So all of the rock that you generate from the pond when you're digging it, you keep it. You take the soil away, keep the rock. And you put the rock in and work your way up. So that, and you want to get that rock up to about where you estimate the water, the annual height of the water will be. You know, the higher it is, the better is for you guys, and you don't have to worry about it.
Would you, no line with rock that exists or?
You can, you can use it, you can call it riprap or erosion stone, whatever you want to call it, okay? But if you go there and you don't have enough rock to line it, you'll have to supplement it. Now, I don't know what you have on the lots. If you have a surplus of rock on the lots, take it from the lots and use it to build the pond. Because to truck erosion stone to that location is three hundred and fifty bucks a load. Okay? And you'll go through a lot really quick. So if you have enough rock on site between your house lots and the pond, use it to line the pond.
It will be, you know, practical enough for.
Two foot minus.
A lot of work too.
Two foot minus. I mean.
Two foot minus.
Yeah, I mean, because if you, if you're generating a rock's tribal and it breaks, the two-foot rock doesn't usually slump too easy.
Right.
You know?
So I did talk to the excavator guy that I'm using to do that.
Yeah.
And he's going to be, as he's digging, he's going to be screening to capture rock so that he.
There you go.
Put around the, around the pond.
Yeah, so.
He'll be pumping it as he digs.
So he's going to, so when you de-water it, you know, he's going to have to line from the bottom grade of two, of three forty-four up to the top of the slope. So you've got, you've got a ten-foot grade change, grade change in twenty feet. So you're going to need a lot of rock in there, so.
And I think there's a lot of rock there.
That's good for you because like I said, the bigger rock even costs more money. So it's three hundred and fifty bucks a load to get it there. And, you know, bigger rock is probably four hundred and fifty bucks a load because they can't put that much in the truck.
Well, we'll let Keith look at it and.
Yeah.
He'll have his comments.
Yeah. You know, that's.
I totally understand what you're talking about.
Because.
And I already know that because I already had a discussion with my excavator about what his process might be for that, and it's exactly what you're probably talking about.
Yeah, because he won't be able to work it. If he doesn't. Because it's just, you can't, I don't care how quick you are, you can't grade mud.
So who knows the engineers? Your engineer's good, whoever knows, he wants added, and I'll add notes from what you told me tonight.
Yeah.
About the riprap and this and, and the fire chief has his comments. So a week, are you going to give it to the fire chief?
I can go, I can give that to the fire chief. I don't think he's as interested as the board would be to, as far as putting it together. He just wanted to make sure that it holds thirty thousand gallons. That was his biggest, I mean, he may have his own tech team, his own hell things. He was crazy.
Well, I mean, it's pretty, what you have there is, is pretty much what it is. The truck's going to drive up to the dry hydrant and hook up.
That's all we wanted.
And it looks like, you know, you've got a, you've got a, a square area of sixty feet. You know, so that's, and then you have your, you know, your whole apron's going to be almost, what? Eighty, ninety feet long?
It's around ninety by.
Yeah. So, I mean, right there, you know, you're plenty of room for a fire truck and it's twelve feet wide. They're going to, they'll give themselves four or five feet off the, the standpipe just because they need room to hook up.
Right.
So, I mean, it's.
And there's room there to make it a little bit bigger if anyone wants to.
Yeah.
We've got the property going to the right.
Yeah.
Yes, off and then we've got the wetland.
Okay.
But we still have, you know, you can make it a third larger if you want it.
I mean, it, based on the way it is right now, that's fine, I mean, let Keach, let Keach take a look at it. You know, if he thinks that something needs to be adjusted, then he'll let us know. But like I said, if you've got plenty of rock there, just make sure you keep it. Because it, you're just, you're going to need it.
Okay, okay. The sheet, they have all the, the test pits, look at the front sheet. And this is going to talk about the stopping distance. The engineer, Christian Smith, looked up in several books or whatever on stopping distance. And the first page is just his email just saying, you know, that one study says at thirty miles an hour, you'll, you will stop at two hundred. And we're two sixty-eight. And plus, because you're going uphill, it's definitely better than that, but we easily make that. But if you, so that's like on that, that second sheet, you know, they're looking at the chart, it says two hundred feet. But to look at the third page, you know, you got your stopping distance of, you know, being alert, you know, every second counts and all that. But they're saying it's actually eighty-nine, if, if they look at it and it takes them a second or whatever, then they step on the brakes, it's around eighty-nine feet. So that's much better, so, you know. So the two hundred sixty-eight feet is for.
Sixty miles an hour.
Yeah.
So you're covered up to sixty right there. Because on his, his little graph he has here.
Yeah, you're right, if they go sixty.
If they're going sixty miles an hour, they, they will touch. Based on that, so.
And he's going pretty fast for that road.
So that's, well, I'm sure it's happened.
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
So that's eighteen car lengths.
Yeah, the only, only correction on that.
And that's on flat ground.
Yeah.
This is for flat ground.
Right.
Yeah.
Only correction on that would be, would be his thirty, his thirty-five speed limit on, on that road. No.
Is my thirty, you're probably right.
I, I bike it, so.
Oh, okay, then you, you are absolutely right there.
And we'll interpret it then.
Yeah, that's, that's all, so it's.
We, we easily have it.
I don't think it's going to seriously affect it.
No, it's good, that's the information we wanted. Do you want to have that on the plan or do you just want it as a note?
He's going to, he's going to give us a, a profile with, with that. And so you'd show that, show that calculation on.
He didn't do a calculation.
Okay.
He took it out of books and.
Well, he could.
We easily have it.
Right.
On a flat road, we're going up a hill, so we're, he's going to, the calculation proved that we're five feet better.
Well, the only, the only issue I, I would have is that our standard is four hundred. So we would, we'll have to grant a waiver, which I bet this, the information you provided here, I don't think is.
Was not an issue.
It's not going to be a problem, but we have to have that information on the, on the plan to be able to say, okay, based on the data that we have, we can grant a waiver.
It's not because you did anything, well, yeah, you can take this, but just have the engineer put it in the drawing.
On the drawing.
Okay? Because you're going to have your line of sight on the road, okay? And this, whether you put it in this way, if, you know, with this, this scale here and the actual point eight.
It can't be part of, in our file of the project, a letter.
It's going to be put on the plan because you know what's going to happen? They're going to lose this.
Right.
That's the problem, if it's on the plan. Yes.
Okay, I, I thought you were going to have to make them, okay.
No, no, no.
Eight percent grade and, okay.
You've already got your line of sight on your plan. And if this is, this information's on the plan, the plan ju, I won't say always, but generally it doesn't get lost.
Right.
So it's on the plan. This little, this little note right here can get lost.
Right.
Yep, I'll, I'll put it there.
Exactly.
All right. Okay, that's all right.
No, purpose.
I'm okay, hey, listen, that's, you want that? Excuse me, I have to go get a drink of water.
Okay.
Thanks.
Do you want one?
Yes, please.
Unwrinkled. The major difference you see is Fred had asked to add up the numbers of how much for the open space, how much is wet and not wet and all that, and that is that block, right?
Yep, yep.
So we have plenty of.
It's very, very, very visible, so that's good.
You don't have to do any math, it's right there. And we did our, our final test pit out there too, when I did the other one, and that was a good pit.
Mm-hmm.
That's the only, the last thing stopping us from sending to the state, and we'll have a pit on every lot now.
Yeah.
Once we're good with the town, we'll go forward to state.
Okay, so. So we still, still have the homeowners association, that, have to be, putting that together.
Producing that, I just wanted approval before we started writing up anything.
Okay. And so the package that we're going to have, we're going to need, we're going to have, obviously have this plan, have the, the yield plan, which you've had prepared previously.
You've got.
Well, I mean, this, this will be all.
Yeah, I want to make it one.
All together.
Yep.
The, obviously, the, the pond, the profile on the road with the information with regard to the stopping distance and, and site distance. And so those will be the, I guess, probably only four drawings that we'll end up having. And well. And I guess we're probably going to need profiles on the two, the two, the two roads.
Which he's done, that's in your.
Okay, so there'll be another, another sheet, another sheet to the package. Yeah, he's, he's done that.
Check full.
Yep.
Everything you've already seen will be.
Oh, stick together one package.
Yep.
Just going, just going through with the.
Yeah.
The drawings that he's going to be submitting to us as a package.
Right.
Rather than individual sheets.
Right. It's easier to go through one sheet, that's all.
All together, that's the thing.
All together, yeah, no, that's, I mean.
Well, if you're in Raymond, they have eight and a half by eleven of that and you can't read it.
No, no, no.
They make me do it that way.
Really?
Yeah.
I'm trying to help the forest industry.
That's right, good, good job.
Everyone's going to read the thing too.
You can't work with, I mean, you have to. That's not a plan. That's a napkin. No, that's, that's fine, I mean, you're going to have all your, so. All of this, Keach has reviewed this? Or you haven't sent this home to him?
We have, we have it.
So we're good with line of sight at this point?
Yeah, I believe so unless.
So, it's a matter of getting it, all of that information on the set of plans.
Right.
And your fire pawn on the set of plans, have them review everything. And what else, Fred?
So, you wanna give Keach the whole thing?
Yeah. Cause you don't wanna have, you want him to.
Well, he, he doesn't need to look at everything.
Well, no, he, actually, he will look at everything. But you wanna send it over in one package. Because every time he has to go review something, which he can do in one sitting as opposed to four.
Right.
Do you want us to hand deliver it? Or how do you normally handle that?
I mean, he'll, I'm sure he would take digital copies, but it, you know, obviously, it's easier for them if it's already printed out.
Hard copy.
Yeah, you know, just get him a copy. I mean, you can call him, see what he says.
Yep.
You know? No, I mean, you know, it's up to him. I mean, if he wants it, it's up to him.
So, our only outstanding issues I see is Keach looking at it, making sure he likes it, and he'll figure a bond about maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he's gonna review it. Any comments that he has, he'll send them to us as well as you.
Yeah. So, we've got Keach, then we got setting the property corners and state subdivision approval.
Right.
Are we close enough for conditional approval tonight?
Um, no.
No. Get it to Keach.
Yeah.
And then he reviews it. And then after he reviews it, then, then we can go that way.
Yeah.
You gotta try.
No. That's why you ask.
Yeah.
And we're gonna, gonna have culverts crossing here?
Yeah. Yeah, you're gonna have culverts on the driveways. He has to because there's a ditch there. There's a ditch there.
You want us to show them on the plan?
Yeah, just show them on the plan.
That'll be part of the, part of the bond.
Make them fifteen inch culverts.
Yeah, you said fifteen inch.
Yeah. Only because twelve inch ones just plug up that much quicker.
Oh, you just a couple of branches.
Yeah.
It's all of a sudden not a, or twelve, yeah?
If you think, if you think your, your, your culverts are gonna be shallow, I would recommend concrete pipe. I'm not telling you concrete pipe. Only, only.
Sell it anymore?
Concrete?
Yeah.
That's all I use.
Really?
Yeah, you know why? Cause first of all, the ADS pipe, you can't get it. And it doesn't, as far as keeping shape.
Yeah.
It doesn't keep shape, especially once you drive the concrete trucks over it. I use concrete pipe.
Make sure we have the covers and.
Yeah, you got, if you're gonna use the ADS, just make sure you have the cover. I'm not telling you you can't use it. I'm just saying. But right now.
Concrete doesn't need much cover.
You can get away with less cover.
Right, definitely.
And the reason why is, is because it's structurally, it's stronger than the ADS, which the ADS relies on cover and stone.
Mm-hmm.
To keep it together. But once you start buying loads of stone at three hundred and fifty bucks a load, the price of the pipe, not only that now, the ADS pipe is actually more expensive than concrete because it.
Is it really?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, it just, it, I, and I would, it sounds crazy, but it's a hell of a lot stronger. And when you, and when you're having the concrete trucks and the lumber trucks and everything else go over the pipe, it just, it just.
Something I didn't know before.
Yeah, and the thing about it is, is if you, I'll give you, for example, twenty-four inch concrete pipe and twenty-four inch ADS pipe, the concrete pipe's cheaper. Because you first, and then you have to wait two months to get it.
As of COVID, I mean, it wasn't.
Just, it, it's, everything's just different. It's, everything's different right now.
No, we won't talk about that.
Yeah, it's just crazy. It's just, it, it's for your benefit. And, and the thing about a, when you use the concrete pipe, normally when you get your ADS pipe, it's twenty feet. And it, you only get sixteen with two pieces of concrete. But if you put three pieces of concrete in your driveway, culvert is twenty-four feet. And when you get to the edge of the road and you have your flare and everything for the drive.
Sometimes you wish you were two.
You were, you need that extra room.
Yeah.
And it just, and if somebody cuts the edge of the driveway with the ADS pipe, pipe crushes.
Squish.
And no matter how well you try to straighten it back out, it doesn't, it does not straighten out. It's, it's for you. It's, it's up to you. You can do whatever you wanna do. It's just a matter of, the other stuff is stronger.
Well, I think, I think if we're really, if we really want concrete, we tell them we want concrete.
No, I mean, it, I'm giving them an option. But right now, it's the availability.
Yeah.
And for what you guys have to do. You have to do a lot of work over that pipe. You're gonna do more damage to it than a homeowner is. So, when the driveway permits come and they look at the end of the driveway and the pipe's all squished, they're gonna say, this is no good.
Because the pricing has gone stupid and the availability is hard, concrete is easier to get.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's more than likely, especially when you get bigger than twelve inches, you get into fifteen and bigger. You need a ton more coverage, a ton more stone, a ton more than supportive.
It just takes longer to put ADS in. Okay.
Are we good?
Okay, I have copies of all that.
Yep.
We need a continuation.
So, how long do you need to get?
Log it.
This stuff over to.
Tomorrow.
Okay. How?
Maybe.
So, you, you still have, you still have to get state subdivision approval, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're ready though.
So.
So, the next.
How busy is our next meeting?
I don't know.
You need thirty days? Or you?
Deducted. We don't need thirty days. How much time will it take for him to review?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we can give him the plans in a.
I don't think Keach, it's not gonna take him very long to review it.
Right. Probably a day at the most.
Yeah.
But the state might take a few weeks, but we just get conditional approval and that, cause this is.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, can't sign it until we get that.
Right.
How busy are you for the next meeting?
Well, you've got the Conservation Commission coming in. It's gonna take, and you've got Glenda Sorak is coming in. Apparently, she's got her area paved.
Oh, really?
Yeah, well, that's what she said. She's looking for a bond release.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
We're gonna have some issues on that one.
You have to take a look at it.
Would our, would our next meeting be relatively quick for the most part if this review and this paper?
Oh, we'd, we'd take a look at that, would, and then.
Two appointments already before you, and Conservation is one of them, and that's gonna be one thing.
Well, did you already set the time for Conservation?
I just don't know. Did you? I can change it.
We haven't.
Well, we've got a rough to do all of our other meetings first. And the conservation last, because that's gonna take the most time.
Yeah. Yeah, as long as, as long as we can get comments back from Steve Keach, cause there's no sense in you guys coming in, and we don't have any.
Yeah, we don't have comments. Just tell us those.
Yeah.
So, that's the way. So, you wanna come to the next meeting?
You wanna come for the next one?
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that would be the twenty-fifth of August. And you wanna change the, them to seven thirty?
Well, the Conservation Commission.
If we haven't given them a time yet, I.
So, we haven't given them a time. They were nice enough to put us on first. At the same time, I wanna take that discussion seriously. I don't, I don't want it to feel.
No, we don't wanna rush.
Yeah, but if you've got people waiting, you know?
Yeah, I, yeah, cause if we put somebody after them.
Yes, that's what I'd like to put them.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna, it's not gonna be a fifteen minute meeting with Conservation Commission. It's gonna be much longer than that.
Right.
So, we should put all of our other issues first, so that we're not pushing people further down. And we can spend all the time we need with the Conservation Commission. So.
I'm gonna have the Conservation Commission wait half an hour for, you know, for, for somebody who takes a long time?
So, I'm sorry. Say that one more time?
I can't hear you.
Make the Conservation Commission wait for half an hour if something runs over, can you?
Well, no, it's not that.
We wanna, wanna set them later.
No.
I know. Can you make it a hard time is my question?
For the Conservation Commission.
Before that, you gotta stop at the time that it.
Oh, yes, I understand what you're saying. So, we're gonna set the Conservation Commission for ten PM.
That way, we'll be done everything.
No, I, what, what I'm trying to get to right now is, who do we have coming in?
We've got Glenda coming in at seven fifteen. I'm assuming that won't take long. But then again, I, every time I assume.
All right, and then who else?
And then I've got, well, the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
But I have, we haven't set the time yet. I have them tick, penciled in for seven thirty, but I can, can change that if they don't know that yet. We could put them in for seven thirty.
Seven forty-five or eight o'clock for the Conservation Commission.
The Conservation Commission would probably have to be eight o'clock, only because.
Yeah.
With Glenda, we don't know what we're looking at yet.
Yeah, right. And it's gonna be necessary for you to pull, pull her plan too.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, no, I've got her file. I've got all that, just.
So, the Conservation Commission is us a joint meeting. It's not a public hearing.
Right.
Because that, what I, and the reason why I'm saying that is because if we make it a public hearing and we say eight o'clock, we can't start it until eight o'clock.
Yeah.
If we get the other two issues resolved and it's seven thirty-five, then we start.
If they're here, okay. But so, you wanna.
Last time that happened with Ms. Sorak, it was forty-five minutes of waiting. Cause she likes to negotiate, or she, and that is.
Well, the problem is, we really, there can't be any negotiations. We have a site plan that she either has to follow, and we, that's it.
I was here for that.
No, I understand that. But yeah, but I understand what you're saying, but it took, she, she thought that she had adhered to the original site plan that she had, and she hadn't.
She hadn't.
Okay, so that's where the issue was.
You wanna bring the hammer?
As long as I can stand on your shoulders.
All right, so you want the Conservation Commission to come in at eight? Is that your plan? And we, we could have Ed and Roscoe come in at seven thirty?
Okay.
For continuation.
And then Glenda at seven fifteen?
I'm sorry?
And then Sorak at seven fifteen?
Oh, yeah.
She's at seven fifteen initially.
She's at seven fifteen.
Okay, and then we'd have to give these guys, you know.
Half an hour.
You know, half an hour.
Yeah.
So.
Basically, the same plan. You're just gonna see what Keach has to say.
Yeah.
You're gonna have it all on one.
Oh, yeah.
It's all stapled together, one thing. And, and that's what we're gonna review. And all you could get is a conditional approval anyways, because you still don't have your, you might have your state subdivision, but you, you don't know.
Doubtful, huh?
My whip doesn't work.
And with the post, post a bond, whatever that's going to be, and the homeowners association agreement.
Yeah, so all those things are, are what you're gonna have to have to get the final.
Right.
So, are you gonna talk to Keach to say, hey, these guys need a bond and a mound and?
Um, actually, when you submit the plan to him, if you're gonna bring it over to him, he's gonna tell him that.
Tell him what we'll have been for.
Yeah, because he's gonna need to do that. That's what you're gonna wanna.
Okay.
Anything else you can think of?
So, you wanna continue this till August twenty-fifth at seven thirty? Want a motion on that?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Did any, who seconded it? Bill?
Bill.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see. Okay.
Thank you.
See you guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
Be easy on this next guy.
Eric has been waiting here.
Okay. Application for a public hearing for a lot line adjustment for Charles and Sherri Sandborn, Jay McGrath, and Donna Lozen on Middle Road and Ridge Road. You are here, in accordance with state statutes, you are hereby notified that the Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing Wednesday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-one at eight PM for application for a lot line adjustment for Charles R. Sandborn and Sherri A. Sandborn, one thirty-five, Middle Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire, for property located on Middle Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire, identified as tax map four nineteen lot sixty-nine, and Jay McGrath and Donna Lozen of Forty Highwoods Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire, for a property located on Range Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire, as tax map four fourteen lot twenty-nine dash one. The intent of this application is to adjust the lot lines between the two lots. Map four nineteen lot sixty-nine would then consist of two hundred and fifty-three plus or minus acres. And map four fourteen lot twenty-nine dash one would then consist of one hundred and seventeen plus or minus acres. You are invited to attend and offer your comments. If you are unable to, the board will accept your comments in writing prior to the hearing and read them aloud at the hearing. Deerfield Planning Board.
Eric, before we get started, how's your son doing?
He's living in Manchester.
Oh, he is?
Yeah. Working concrete.
Yep.
Doing okay?
Tell him we miss him.
I, I, I actually called him a couple of months ago. I told him to call you up and rattle your cage about something. I forget what it was. Okay. Go ahead, Eric.
Okay, thank you. My name is Eric Mitchell. My office, and I prepare these plans. The first thing on the agenda is a lot line adjustment. It's between lot, tax map four nineteen lot sixty-nine, which is about two hundred and fifty-eight acres. And it's owned by Charles and Sherri Sandborn. And then also, lot line adjustment with lot, tax map four fourteen, lot twenty-nine dash one, which is about a hundred and seventeen acres. And that's owned by Jay McGrath and Donna Lizpine. The, you know, we stated before, but what we're trying to do in the, the area that we have shown here is we have parcel A up here, which is owned by the Sandborns, which is going over to lot twenty-nine dash one. And this portion, which is currently twenty-nine dash one, is going to the Sandborns. This lot up here, this area, not lot, but the area is eighteen acres, and this is twenty-three acres. And you can see the line that we're posing pretty much per x right across to a point right there. The easiest place to look is up here in the legend. You can see that the two areas that we have are up here in the legend. Just pretty much being, this lot line's going away here, and this lot line's going away here. So, lot twenty-nine dash one will come straight down and be more of a rectangle here.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't affect any of the rest of the properties. It's just an adjustment with the lot line. There was some thought that that was the way it always was bent, was. And so, this is to, to adjust it where it's in a place where I believe both parties thought it was close to where it should have been, not as was shown on a, a survey plan that was done a few years ago.
Yeah. It's better.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Uh, anybody on the board have any questions?
Guess the only, only one I have is, you're gonna be setting a, setting an iron pin at, or drill hole at the.
Yes. There is a.
Right there, yeah.
Right here.
Yeah.
There was a ring of stones at the end of the wall. We will be setting a point there. And this line is already monumented down through here.
Yeah.
So, we will be setting that monument there.
Okay, can you, I guess, put that on the plan?
So, we're looking for a.
Yeah, just.
Pin here.
Actually, it says, I'm, I'm sorry. It says a drill hole found. So, we actually found a drill hole there.
On where the.
End of the wall over here.
At the end of, where it says proposed lot line and it comes in there, there's a drill hole there at the end of that line?
Right here, this is the hole, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
D H F, which.
Okay, you have the D H F up on the rock, the stone wall side on the.
Yeah.
So, there's another drill hole on the other side as well?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Actually, it, it looks like it's an iron rod set. At least that's the, cause you don't have a double circle there on this one.
So, this, this point right here?
Yes.
Where's your drill?
Drill hole, drill hole found, drill hole set, basically.
You got a drill hole there.
Right.
But you're saying there's one there as well?
Well, there is based on the plan I have here. We cleaned it up a little bit, and I think that that is a drill hole found. But if it's not, the plan that I gave you for your signing will have all the monuments, you know, set or found. So, everything will be there. If that monument, if it isn't drill hole found, which I think it is.
Okay.
And it's a end of a wall, we have to put a pin or drill hole, and we'll do that.
Okay.
So, we'll certify it on the plan that all the monuments were set.
Makes, that's the only, only thing I see.
Anybody, any other guys have any questions?
Nope.
So, we can approve a conditional approval of the lot line adjustment.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
With monument, and then we can sign that once the monumentation is set.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right. So, I'll make a motion to approve the lot line adjustment for Charles and Sherri Sandborn.
Second.
Subject to.
Monumentation.
Monumentation, that's it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
There's this problem with the paperwork you were talking about. You said something about Range Road. We're not on Range Road. You read that. You read something and you said Range Road. We're not on, we're never on Range Road. My partner does not touch Range Road.
Where's the, the letter, the? Where's the, uh, the letter, the, uh, what does it say right here?
I think that was right on the blueprint that you guys have.
Okay, it says...
Check the plan. What does the plan say? I sent out two of those. It was down there.
Highwoods Road.
Oh, it doesn't give...
And then later it says Range.
And then on, on our, on our note of here, it says Range.
It says Middle and Range, yeah.
But I sent out two of those because there was a bit of confusion between what was on the plan.
Okay, so you, on this plan right here, it says, based on the plan that we have right in front of us.
Yeah.
It says, it says Middle and Range Roads.
Yeah.
That's what I went by, obviously.
We're not anywhere near Range Road.
Well, we're near it, but we don't board.
We're on, on...
So where, just below where your pen is, right there.
Right. The only roads that actually have frontage for any of the property is Middle and Range.
Okay, so that's why, that's why it's listed.
Well, yeah, you do have frontage up here.
See, of course, we don't have Range Road frontage.
Right, but the Sandborns did, and that's why...
Sandborns do, yeah.
That's why it's on there.
Right.
Because we have ridge, ridge, we're on, on the ridge pretty much.
Right, but it's taking into consideration both.
Yeah, well, we just want to make sure that everything is correct this time, because something happened, and all of a sudden now our properties are all messed up.
Right, oh, I understand.
We bought it 27 years ago, and it was the way it is going back to it.
The way we're making it.
Right.
We have several maps that show that, and I spoke to the people in the town, and they weren't any help, so we found that this was the better way to go.
Okay. No, that's the only reason that, that it says Range on there. It's, it's because it's taking care of both owners.
I had shown her that.
Okay.
Okay, are you giving a timeframe for this? Is it conditional, or are you just...
How long do you need for...
It would be conditionally, yeah.
How, how long do you need for monumentation?
We can have plans back here for the next meeting, if we don't have to be here, but we can have...
So we'll give you 30 days to get it.
You don't have to use the 30 days, but...
You do it in your time, but I mean, we can give you 30 days for it.
Okay, I just wanted to get that in there.
So we voted in, it's, it's, we voted for conditional approval.
Right.
Allowing them 30 days to get the monumentation in, to get the paperwork back to Jane.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so that's...
That's the first part? There's something else?
Well, we got another whole, yeah, subdivision. So could I have a, those back, or one of them anyway?
All right, so I'm going to hand you that one.
That's fine, I'll take two. Okay, then we've got, uh, subdivision. And this should, it's a copy for everybody. That's, that's the notice. And these are the plans.
Okay.
Uh, we have an application for a public hearing for a minor subdivision of Charles and Sherri Sandborn on Middle Road in accordance with RSA 676 colon 4, you are hereby notified that Charles R. Sandborn and Sherri A. Sandborn of 135 Middle Road, Deerfield, New Hampshire, will make application for a public hearing to consider approval of a minor subdivision for property located on Middle Road in Deerfield, New Hampshire, map 419 Lot 69, consisting of 253 acres owned by the applicants. The intent of the application is to create one new lot consisting of three acres. The formal application will be submitted to the planning board of the town of Deerfield on Wednesday, August 11th, 2021, at 8:15 P.M. The board will consider acceptance, and if accepted, will hold a public hearing at the time. You are hereby, you are invited to attend or offer your comments in writing. If you are unable to do so, the, excuse me, sorry about that. If you are invited to attend and offer your comments. If you are unable to do so, the board will accept your comments in writing prior to the hearing and read them aloud at the hearing. Deerfield Planning Board.
Okay. So what do we have? So this would be the new lots, and you're going to have a, a three-acre lot off of the... All right. So... And that's off of Middle.
Yep.
Line of sight.
Line of sight.
So we have 200... 200. All right. Do we have a motion to accept the plan?
Who the hell is that guy?
I don't know him. The edifice.
Have a motion to accept?
Yep.
So moved. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Go ahead, Eric, present.
This is, uh, one of the properties we just talked about on the lot line amendment. Tax map 419 Lot 69. This portion of it is on Middle Road. The purpose of the plan is to cut off one three-acre lot on Middle Road, which, out of the 250 acres of the whole lot. Close lot meets the zoning requirements. It will be served by individual well and set system. We have a good site distance on Middle Road for the drive-by, which we've shown on sheet number two. Um, we have asked for, uh, two waivers. One waiver is Section 3, Roman numeral 3, and then numeral 3C3, B in parentheses 4. Not to require, uh, site-specific soils mapping, where the wetlands have been mapped, and then the lot has less than 25% wetland, about 11%. So we verified that it meets the requirements for upland. And the other waiver was to, uh, Section Roman numeral 3, uh, number 3C3A5, which is not to require meets and bounds of the entire Lot 69 of that 250 acres. So what we've done for the survey work, we have done the survey work, all adjacent to where the plan is here. We've done enough work down below to verify we still have more than 200 feet of frontage left, uh, down through there. Uh, we just haven't re-subwayed the entire lot. So, um, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions or comments that you have.
We have to address the waivers first.
Yep.
Not unusual that we've, particularly in a situation like this, we've got a huge parcel that, uh... So I'll make a motion to, uh, to waive Section, uh, Roman numeral 3, 3-point C, 3A5 with regard to, uh, surveying the entire boundary of, uh, the, the parent parcel, and also to, to waive requirement with regard to specific, uh, site-specific soil mapping. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So as far as the new monumentation, all we're looking at is two, uh, two new iron, iron rods or one iron rod and a drill hole?
I believe one in the, one in the back here, and the other will probably be a drill hole in the front.
Yep.
So I think it's just two monuments there.
So just make sure it's a base stone if we're going to put a drill hole and not one that you can... Oh. Put over here.
It's a base stone, and we don't, we'll end up getting a rod.
Yeah. Okay. Figured I'd just mention it, but not, I don't have to worry about it with you, I think, so...
But to make little short bounds, this high, you can just put it on front line.
I've seen them too.
They move somehow. All right.
And, uh, I do want to, to compliment Eric in getting the, uh...
Line of sight.
Line of sight on here, too.
Yeah. That's good, because that's usually an issue.
Yeah. You have the state subdivision approval?
It's been, uh, submitted, but it's not been, uh, yet, so we're still waiting on that.
So probably in a conditional, state subdivision and setting the...
And monumentation?
Yeah.
Uh, what, certification?
Yeah.
Monumentation. Guys, you, any questions?
Anybody out here?
Any questions from the audience? All right, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant, uh, conditional approval for the, uh, Sandborn subdivision on Middle Road, subject to state subdivision approval and, uh, a certification of monumentation, uh, for setting of the, what? Those are the easterly, easterly two corners?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, you're waiting for your state subdivision approval. Are you thinking 30 days, 60 days?
Um, it should be less than 30 days.
Okay.
So...
Do you want 60?
That's, that's fine, but I think what I'll have to do...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you always get it earlier, that's fine, that's fine. It's just, you know...
So make it 60, yeah.
Yeah, make it 60.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay with the second, too.
Okay. Very good.
All right.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, okay.
You need this.
I need at least one of them back, yeah. I don't have any. This too.
See, you can fold them better than me.
They've already been folded, so it's not a big deal.
Okay.
Wow.
You have anything else?
Yeah.
I think that was it, unless Cam wants to...
He won't be here.
Yeah.
He won't be here for the initial conference, whether it be Conservation Commission. I doubt that we'll, if anything, we'll, we'll probably get a, if we're lucky. If we're lucky, maybe we talk about setting up a committee, maybe.
Yeah.
See where we go there.
Yeah.
Errol? At this point, I mean, we're, if things go expeditiously, we get started before 8 o'clock. Okay? But, you know, I, I could tell you, we're not starting it at 9 o'clock. That I can tell you. We'll, we'll be discussing our stuff...
I have a, a side wager for a nickel on that time.
I'll go as much as you want. Just write your check.
You want a nickel?
Yeah, so I mean, as far as, um, you know, you know, we, we obviously don't want to start on something like that at, at 9:30. Okay? Hopefully, um... I will, uh, make a point to take a drive-by, you guys as well, or Glenda Zorak is up at the end.
Yeah.
Um, and take a, you know, just a drive-by to see where, how the paving is, so that when we have the meeting and we have the plan in front of us, we can verify what's there and what's not there. So that when we have the meeting, we're not... Because if, if we don't feel it's right, what we're going to have to do is we'll have to have a walkthrough.
Yeah.
Okay? Because, you know, we're not going to go like, I think it's there, or I'm, I'm not sure, you know? We have to have a walkthrough, we have to have a walkthrough.
Because the last time, last time we met with her, she, there were things on the site plan that was, she was supposed to do...
That she hadn't.
That she hadn't, in addition to the paving.
Right.
And I'm, I...
She only mentioned the pa, I do have the file at home and all the minutes and everything is there, so...
Because my guess is that she'll be saying she doesn't want to do the other stuff.
Probably right.
Well, um... Well, we'll see what she's asking for when she gets here. Obviously, you know, we have a plan that we approved quite a while ago.
Yeah, it's been approved.
Years.
Yeah.
She wants the release of the rest of the bond.
Right, but we can't release it unless it's done what we're looking for.
Yeah.
So, you know, uh, you know, we, we won't be going into semantics of what we, what was or what, and... If she doesn't want to do something, she's going to have to resubmit a new plan.
Okay, because this goes back to, I think it was 2018.
Wow, it's longer than that.
It might even be longer, yeah.
The last meeting with her.
Yes, the last meeting.
Okay, yes.
Because we did this quite a while ago.
Oh, yeah, right.
Which has been quite a while.
Well, before...
Oh, no, the site plan itself, yeah.
The site plan is probably 10 years old.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that, 2018 was when she came in.
When she came in, the King...
To get the bond released. So that's three years ago.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm guessing that, that the original site plan is probably 10 years old.
Yeah, at least.
Probably a good guess, like 2012, something like that, probably. Close.
Okay, I'll have it here so you can go through it anyway. All right.
There's no time.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Bill.
I was waiting for the second.
We missed you, Bill.
I'm all packed, we're just going.
So when do you leave?
Uh, 20th.
Oh, so you, you raise this to the end of next week?
From Friday.